Harting.
Here.
Hug.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Row. Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Melton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, everybody have a seat. I think I would be remiss with one week left until the primary elections for the city of Omaha. So I'm asking everyone to exercise the right to vote, one of the most important rights that we have as citizens of the United States. So not just you vote, but encourage your friends and family to vote. Encourage them to look up who their city councilperson is. Look up the different people who are running for mayor and find the person and vote for the person that you think would best represent you. And in addition to that vote, though, also find a serviceman, somebody that has served our military, because they're the reasons we continue to have that right to vote and that freedom, and thank them for that. So hope to see y'all at the polls a week from today.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least to vibrate if you haven't done that already. And if you have any issues hearing the proceedings today, you can contact our building commission representative here for a living, a listening device, or you may also access the screen in the back for closed captioning.
Item six, to consider a class D liquor license for a shank car food mart located 822 North 40th Street.
This item was postponed from the March 18th meeting. The vote is today. It will require a council member to turn their light on to engage. Councilmember Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Are you the manager of?
Yes.
Please step up. Good afternoon. Can you give us your name and your address, please?
My name is Kool Sasankar. My address is 822 North 40th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131.
Can you read that again? Sorry, that mic. There you go. That's better. Thank you.
My name is Kool Sasankar. Address is 822 North 40th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131.
Thanks. Good afternoon. You and I had a conversation last week and then we spoke today on the phone, correct?
Yes.
And did you speak to Ms. Magginsen of the Jocelyn Neighborhood Association?
Yes, I do.
And your attorney, Mr. Persh, was on that call as well, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you agree to the stipulations if we approve your license today that there would be two stipulations? One is that you agree that you won't have no single containers of beer to be sold of 32 ounces or less?
Yes, I do.
You agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. And the other one was no shooters of 375 milliliters or less. Did you agree to that stipulation?
Yes.
With the Neighborhood Association? Okay. That's all the question I had, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to approve.
It'd be a motion to amend.
I'm sorry. A motion to amend with those two stipulations.
Correct.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve with those, with that, those amended stipulations. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
As amended?
And a motion as amended.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thanks.
Item eight, to consider a class D liquor license for a fire water grill located at 7007 Grover Street.
This item was also postponed from the March 18th meeting. The vote is today. It would require a council member to engage if they so choose. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good afternoon. I'm good. How are you?
Good. Were you able to have a conversation with the neighborhood?
Yes, we had a meeting today at 10:30. It was a good meeting.
Okay. When, we don't need to discuss this further, I'm going to go ahead and make a recommendation to, to support this. However, I do need to talk to you offline, so if you could get ahold of me and set up, go to, contact city council to set up an appointment to me because there's some information I'd like to share with you.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that. And then we do need your names for the record.
Yep. Tamir Samiev. Address 202 South 73rd Street.
Jim Carson. 4611 South 96th Street in Omaha.
And it sounds like part of your discussion with that neighborhood was to continue to build that relationship, but then also participate in some neighborhood cleanups and things of that nature, too?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I don't see any further lights. There was a motion and a second to approve with that, with those understandings. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thanks.
Item eight, to consider a class D liquor license for a fire water grill located at 7007 Grover Street.
This item was also postponed from the March 18th meeting, but today is the public hearing and vote, so I'll take any proponents on number eight.
Mario Mandoffo. 15903 Josephine Street.
Thank you. Here to answer questions?
Pardon?
Just here to answer questions?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Good luck. Hope you did.
Item ten, to consider a class I liquor license for KTM Bar located at 9024th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is David Outen. 2804 South 87th Ave. Here on behalf of the applicant, KTM Bar LLC doing business as KTM Bar for their class I liquor license. The bar will be located at 90204th Street. The hours of operation will be 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Happy to answer any questions the council members may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon. Donnie Johnson and Johnson's Question Foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. We have nothing against all these gentlemen and this young man here and his company joining the Omaha Chamber of Commerce and the United States Senate Chamber of Commerce, but what we're concerned with, under prohibition, it didn't work, so would you please start sending some time aside for medical marijuana, sir?
Any other opponents to number 10? Seeing none, public hearings closed? Motion and a second? Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Jackson Street addition with approval of a waiver to Section 53848 Lot Depth located southwest of 29th and Jackson Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 12, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for children's final plat located northeast of 8th and Douglas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Caleb Snyder with Lampard Airson, 14710 West Dodge Road, here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Um, hi.
Hi.
How are you today?
Good. How about you?
Good. So tell me a little bit about what you're going to do here.
Sure. Share my screen here. So this is a new development that's going to be located on the northeast corner of 8th and Douglas. Um, give this one a sec.
Push it up all the way and see if that'll come on for you. Looks like it's right by the ocean. Looks beautiful.
(laughing).
If you want to continue with your remarks.
Sure. So we're on the northeast corner of 8th and Douglas. This will be the, the future home of the Beam multi-family, 261 unit multi-family building that'll sit on top of a four-story parking structure that'll be owned and operated by the city of Omaha. Immediately to the west of the Beam building is the new home of the Omaha Children's Museum, which we're all excited about. And then on the north side of the site is another parking garage that'll be owned and operated by the city of Omaha. I think another 310 stalls and that's all together. Three different buildings, 615 parking stalls, 261 units. And then any other questions you might have?
What will the value be?
That I do not know. I do not have that. And I don't see NewStyle here to help me answer that question.
Okay. All right. So if you could get that information to me.
Sure.
And granted, NewStyle is not here. They're not able to answer any questions about maybe potential cost of the apartments and things like that?
Correct.
Okay. And so I'd like to have some conversation about that as well.
Sure. I can help set that up and facilitate that meeting with you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 13 through 15 can be considered together for 3030 Upland located at 3030 Upland Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone this property from R5 District to R7 District. Items 14 and 15, resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items 13 through 15 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Kelly Johnson Dorsey with the Omaha Planning Department. 3030 Upland Parkway is part of our Choice Neighborhoods Initiative for South Side Terrace Indian Hill Neighborhood. This is one of our first off-site phases. It includes 74 total units. Here to answer any questions you have, along with our project partners.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Joni Balk, Omaha Housing Authority, 1823 Harney Street. Also here to answer any questions that you might have about this project.
Thank you.
Hi. Bill LuKash, Brin Shore Development, 903 South 184th Avenue Circle. Also here to answer any questions. This is, of course, one of our first, or the first off-site phase of the CNI South effort, which we're very excited to get up and out of the ground. We are moving through the entitlement process right now. We are hopefully going to break ground in August. We have completed a lot of community engagement prior to this point as part of our Choice Neighborhood Efforts in South Omaha. We have 17 market rate units in this development. There are 70, 70 units in the building and then four townhomes that are just to the north on the same property. There are 36 project-based voucher units that will be supporting people relocating from South Side Terrace to this building if they choose to. So again, happy to answer any questions, very excited about this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item 16 through 20 can be considered together for Kensington Park located northwest of 204th and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to MU District. Item 17, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement. Items 18 and 19, resolutions to approve the revised preliminary plat and final plat. Item 20, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and vote on items 16 through 20 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hawzy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. I'll make myself available to any questions the audience or council may have today.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Needs to be the development at 204th and Q, right, Donnie?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I was going to help get you out of trouble selling us Benson Park, so that's what I'm going to help you with today because we'd like to buy Benson.
That's not on topic. Has to be turned forth.
Yes, sir. Donnie R. Johnson and Johnson's Question Foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. So, number 17, we're willing to work with those developments in West Omaha if you guys are willing to come down to North Omaha and start buying that land so we can connect the interstate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to these items?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I, I believe I'm opposed to it, but I'm more opposed to, you're permitting Donnie Johnson to get up here and speak on anything he wants to, but you don't let me do that. He's off-topic. You don't let me talk off-topic. Are you going to kick me out today?
I treated you both the same way.
Thank you.
Please stay on topic.
Thank you.
Any other opponents to these items today? Seeing none, public hearings closed? There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 21, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3960 North 36th Avenue from R4 or R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be as communication and opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Kale Cox. The application is to build a duplex at this property. It's right next to North High. There's a lot of vacant properties around there. Our goal is to develop duplexes for fair market.
Okay. And your address, too, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. 2967 Martha Street, Omaha, 68105.
All right. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Hi there. How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Good. Great opportunity there. I just wanted to know what level of engagement you've had in the neighborhood or in the community.
Yeah, it's been fun. So the first, we had a couple of meetings on it. First one didn't go well. Sent out letters to everybody. I was not familiar with the process, so I sent out letters to everybody. I've met with them, met with one neighbor that was concerned about trees. We took out the two biggest trees that were a threat. The goal is to redo the area. I think it's got a assessed value of 5,600, which is pretty much pointless. So the goal is to take that out. They were concerned about the three-bedroom, three-bedroom stack, so we changed it to a two-bedroom side-by-side. So basically, just in order to fit the neighborhood better. It won't be a two-story, it'll be one-story. We'll face the North High, so we'll face to the north as opposed to the rest of it. There's four off-street parking when three is required, so we've gone above and beyond on everything. The goal is to be good neighbors, but that's, so we've made every accommodation possible.
So question, so will there be any garages?
There won't. There'll be parking, but not garages. The, the challenge with that area is the comps. So you have to be careful. Originally, we were going to do a one, a single, single-family, and it didn't work out from a comps perspective, so we switched to a duplex. It'll be side-by-side ADA, but we did not have that, we did not have room in the budget for a garage at this point, but it will have four paved parking spaces.
So will, so there will be, what, two, three?
Two, two bedrooms, one bath.
Okay.
Which fits the, which is basically what's in the neighborhood now, is two, two bedrooms. Two bedrooms, one bath.
Okay. And will there be, we talk about affordable housing.
Yeah.
And that seems to be a catch-all phrase for everything, you know?
Yep.
I'd like to be a little bit more specific about that.
Specifically, specifically, these will be 401, or not 401, it'll be, what's the word I'm looking for? The, for low-income housing, what's the word? For some reason, I'm drawing a blank, but.
So will you qualify for Section 8?
Section 8, that's the one.
Okay.
Yes, it will.
Okay.
That's the goal, is to keep it affordable to the point where it can be Section 8. It doesn't have to be, but it will be at that point. I think the Section 8 for two-bedroom in that zip code was like 990 or something like that. So that's what the, that's what, when I said market rate, that's what I was meaning by, it was specifically zoned, or specifically based on Section 8 for that area. It's not saying it will be Section 8, but it will, it will 100% qualify. It'll also be zero entry into the home, so there won't be any steps or anything going in. It'll all be on one level. Bathroom will be accessible. Both mine and my business partner's sisters are both in wheelchairs, so that was kind of the, one of the big things that we want to make sure we got. So with the stacked duplex, we couldn't do both units accessible. By switching it to a two-bedroom, one-bath, we can keep it within Section 8 rates as well as keep both, both sides completely accessible, and it matches the neighborhood better.
Copy that. Um, motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Bagley.
Hi.
Harting.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 22, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district located at 5804 Corby Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Mr. President. Donnie R. Johnson and the Johnson's Question Foundation. And I'm supporting this program because when I was 23-year-olds, I had to get 100 signatures to be on the ballot to be on the city council. Mention that to Mr. Larry. That's what I did at 23-year-old.
You're off-topic. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Hi. How are you doing today?
Good.
Good. I'm Ian HoShwinder. I live at 2812 North 58th Street. It's the property directly adjacent to the lot. Not, I guess, entirely a proponent, or opponent, but I do support the project. I just have some serious concerns about the sewer line that I have running through the lot that is being developed. I brought the concerns up with Jessica here. It's the, uh, property directly adjacent to the lot. Um, not, I guess, an entirely a proponent, um, or opponent, but I do support the project, I just have some serious concerns about the sewer line that I have running through the lot that is being developed. Um, I brought the concerns up with Jessica here. I didn't really know that I would need to maybe bring them up with the council, or voice my opinion here, but I see that this is my only opportunity left to do so. Benson is, um, the neighborhood that, that I was raised in. Um, I grew up two blocks from there, and actually, the address that Jessica lives at now. Um, I went to Rose Hill Elementary School, um, and, yeah, so, first-time homebuyers, been there a little over two years, um, fresh marriage, under a year married to my wife, and, uh, yeah, we, we would just really like serious consideration on, uh, and support with, uh, renewing our sewer line along, alongside this project. And, um, I've outlined this in a email communication, um, just a few days ago. Uh, my concerns are also aligned with, uh, getting a new easement agreement. There is no current listed easement agreement, and I just discovered this sewer middle of February, after a plumbing issue, um, January 2nd. So, um, I'd really just like that considered before this project is fully approved, so...
Okay.
Also, um, any, any support that the city or developer can have, um, in some sort of writing, just so that I can sleep at night soundly, um, just having a hard time grasping the idea of covering the costs of this sewer replacement, but it is something that is very important to my wife and I, that the plumber did, um, say that we should be concerned about in the next few years, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up with you here in a minute. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Um, Jessica, maybe I'll start with you, if you don't mind coming up. Um, this is in my district, and I, I did just discover this issue a couple days ago, I think, uh, in an email from Ian. Uh, I did drive it yesterday, too, and took a look at it. And I appreciate your new partnership, Livable Omaha. I think that shows great, um, promise for us in our conversations about affordable housing, and this is a unique project, uh, of that kind, that I know you've had engagement with the community on, and I, I went and saw your display at Dundee Bank in Benson as well. So, I am supportive of the project, but I, I also, um, can understand Ian's concerns and appreciate his commitment to Benson and his history in Benson, and, um, and being a first-time homeowner, looking for some reassurances, so... We've had a few emails about, um, well, first of all, why don't I ask you to talk about your project a little bit, 'cause I think it's, uh, something people should know, and then I want to ask you about his concerns a little bit.
Sure. So, Partners for Livable Omaha focuses on design-build solutions that address the livability issues in the Omaha community. We're the creator of the Omaha Mobile Stage. Um, some people may be familiar with that. That started as, as a design-build with the College of Architecture. This is our second project. We're working on aging-ready housing. Um, the, uh, this particular build is for two units. Um, we're doing the planned unit redevelopment, so that we can do a lot split. Um, the sort of list price of these units is, um, $150,000 for, um, one unit that's a one-bedroom, about 600 square feet, and then $190,000 for the two-bedroom, which is about 775 square feet. Um, the students, we work, uh, with the College of Architecture, um, they run a design-build studio, so we have 17 master's-level architecture students who have been working on this for about 30 weeks now. We do not currently own this lot. Uh, we have a purchase agreement with the current owner of it, and, um, through Ian coming forward and sort of educating us on, um, his lateral sewer line is running, uh, under this property. Um, so, we worked with the existing property owner to put together language that would help us achieve our development and sort of, kind of untangle what was laid out in 1938, when these sort of lots were originally developed, uh, by that developer at that time. So, we've been communicating, Pete's been copied on a lot of those messages. Our builder is wholly family housing, and so, in our project, we attempt to absorb every single cost we can. Um, that includes tree removals that are on the property line, uh, new fence that are on the shared property line. It's just the kind of little, the, not little details, these are major details for Ian, and we totally understand why he is stressed out and concerned. Um, we're working with our builder, kind of in real time, and communicating everything that we know in real time with him, too. So, we're trying to be good neighbors. Uh, we're doing everything we can right now, this week, to see what sort of financially we can absorb. Um, the easement language that we've proposed to the, to the current property owner is, you know, hopefully adding a lot of value to his situation, so we are removing, uh, we're offering to remove at our cost, the old shared line, that's sort of at the end of its sort of life expectancy. It's just, the final detail seems to be who's going to pay for the new pipe that is going to be, the, um, there's three pipes going into one trench, kind of at the end of the day on this development, so, that's where we are. You know, it's our intention to do everything we can to absorb shared costs and to add value to his position as part of this development.
Okay. Yeah, and so, in our, in our correspondence, there were three sewer lines, as you described, two from the development and one from the easement.
Correct. Yep.
And it's the intention to replace any portion of the sewer that's over 50 years old?
Correct.
Right? And so, all three of those would qualify?
Um, there, there's only one sewer line currently on this site, and that is Ian's, so he has what I guess you could call an implied easement, just due to how it was developed, but nothing's ever been in writing, so, we didn't want to step in and buy this property until the current owners worked through those details. So, our purchase agreement with this lot requires that owner, her name's Carly Reeve, and Ian to reach an agreement. Um, we're doing everything we can to kind of help people understand, uh, kind of this world, so, you know, wholly names wing, and the city's staff has been incredibly helpful. Um, the Public Works staff, they've just been great, so, you know, we're kind of caught, we're all caught in the middle on this, and it's our intention to, you know, have open communication with Ian. Um, I can understand his position and how it, it is very stressful to be a new homeowner and then get the news that your sewer line isn't, you know, operating the way you thought it was when you bought your home. None of this was documented, so everyone's kind of finding out together. The, the current lot owner had no idea herself, so...
So, and until, and unless you own the lot, you can't agree to Ian's requesting, is that what you're telling us?
Um, we can give him an MOU between our nonprofit and him, but we, we are not the owner of this lot yet. Um, you know, that's sort of the extent. We're, we're having wholly name housing run numbers this week, so that we can provide greater context on what we think the financial implications will be, and then we can sort of spell out what costs we're willing to absorb. We've already spoken to which kind of line items, like, he's aware that we're removing trees that are, you know, it's benefiting him for these trees to be on there, very, very close to his home. Um, so, we just haven't been able to attach numbers with that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
If you had one more week, would that give you time to do that, you think?
Um, the wholly name's working on it now. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm kind of at their mercy, too, in this situation. They're, they're very responsive, though. I think they'll be finished...
Okay.
Very soon.
And if, if we waited one more, one or two more weeks on this till we have those answers, that doesn't hurt your schedule or your...
It does, yeah. So, our project is very time-sensitive, because it's a collaboration with the College of Architecture, so they work on a semester schedule, um, that mid-May is the end of their schedule. In design-build, they, the students are, um, in charge of, uh, some components of this off-site fabrication work, and, um, we're anticipating spun, funding, uh, decision on, on April 3rd. So, we're, we're on a pretty tight schedule with the university, um, so we'd appreciate no delays.
Okay.
Yep.
Ian, I might call you back up, too?
Okay.
Hi. Hi. What's your name and address for the record again?
Ian Hochwinder, 2812 North 58th Street.
Thanks. So, I can appreciate your concern, too, and also your passion for Benson, uh, growing up there and choosing to live there with, uh, your, your new and first house. Um, tell us about what you just heard there, and it sounds like there, there's three, three parties, um, all working in the same direction, all want to achieve the same thing, um, but I can understand your discomfort not quite having the information you're seeking, or at least not having it in writing. Um, I guess, describe for me your level of comfort at this point with what you just heard.
Um, I, I understand what I just heard. Um, I have, uh, some additional information I'd like to add, though, to that.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the easement agreement that was drafted, uh, between the two other parties, you know, I, I am directly affected by and was not included in the conversation. Negotiations aren't really possible if there's a contingency to buy, if the agreement that was drafted between the two has no room for me in it. Um, I have been working on a draft with professional, uh, council that gives me more rights and protections, but, uh, the draft that they have given me, it's, leaves me a very vulnerable position. Um, the 50-years clause that's in there, it leaves sort of a gray area of they could dig, and then suddenly, like, oh, it is 50 years old, and like, it allows them to have me pay, um, to renew my pipes, which, although, you know, I might be convinced by them to go based on trust, it's not enough for me to, to rest easy, and I don't see how it's too much of a problem to put in writing the promises that were made. Um, and the promises originally were, you know, trenching would be theirs, and the, putting the pipes in would be mine, which is not that big of a cost, considering how big of a cost it would be. The estimate I got from a plumber was 60 grand, um, originally, before I involved any other parties, as I learned this this year. So, to just put the pipes in would be significantly less, but I was not prepared to afford that cost at the time. So, to try to wrap my head around just the cost of the pipe is okay for me. It, it kind of works. I still am not very wealthy at all, but, um, yeah, the assurance of just, we will absolve that, and not being a pawn in, um, a budget is much better for me, and I, I just want to, uh, put it behind me at this point. I, I need to rest, I need to stop thinking about it. Uh, it's just, yeah, I, I have called the current lot owner, and when I asked her if we could remove that line, uh, she said, "Well, I would, uh, I would urge you to trust the process." And she said that she's not sure if she could remove that, she's gonna talk to Jessica. And, uh, I, in turn, emailed Jessica and said, "Look, I can sign this, if that's what's needed, but I need in writing the, uh, promises that were made to me." And I wasn't able to get those at the time, which is what prompted me to want to reach out, um, with the limited time that I had, just a few days since I got the initial agreement, was, it was on Wednesday last week, so...
And I assume it'd be helpful for you, too, if we had, uh, cost estimates on these things?
That would be helpful. Um, it would also just be nice to have a reassurance that, despite the cost, that it would be, um, taken care of to a certain extent. That way, I don't have to wonder if it's gonna be way more than I could possibly ever afford. Um, also, if there's anything that could be done, like, outside of the developer, that the city has to offer, as far as like a long-interest loan or anything like that, or like, I, I don't, I'm not 100% sure what is possible, but, um, yeah, those are my thoughts on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, uh, either Mr. Fanslaw or Mr. Stube with, with Planning and Public Works, I know this is fairly new to you, too, this, this dilemma, just in the last 24 hours, but, um, we talked about it a little bit this morning. Uh, any thoughts to share from your perspective on the current situation, or how to best resolve?
Uh, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Um, I first learned about it this morning, so, um, I believe Eric England and Jim Tyler from the Public Works Department have been discussing, um, sewer locations, what they think is physically out there, but in my opinion, at, at the cost of moving the line, repairing the line, is, is probably a civil matter between the two parties. Eric did look at the plat, it goes back to like 1886, and there were no, um, nothing on that plat that indicated any kind of sewer easement, so, I, we just don't have that information. We didn't, at the time of application. We weren't aware of it, uh, when the plan came to us, when it went to Planning Board about the sewer. So, I don't know if Bob or Jim have something to add from Public Works.
Go ahead, Bob.
Bob Stube, Public Works. Yeah, the only thing that I can add is that, obviously, this is somewhat of a unique situation, because the individual property does not have frontage, uh, to an existing sewer that's in the location there, so, that particular private sewer goes directly to the south, from what I understand, into Corby Street, and, and so, obviously, it's accessing private property, and so, in, in our opinion, Public Works would not have any role in this particular situation.
Okay. Mr. Fanslaw, I, I guess, I suppose I can also ask this question of Mr. Kuzi, but when you see, you think it's between the two parties, we actually have three parties here at the moment. Uh, go ahead.
Well, again, like Bob said, it's a private sewer, so I don't think the city's party to it.
Okay. The parties would be the current property owner and the neighbor on the easement.
I would imagine so, yes.
Mr. Kuzi.
Matt Kuzi, Law Department. Based on the conversation that I witnessed today and the questions being asked by council, this appears to be a private matter between the property owners and the interested parties, and that's something that would involve the city, and not something that we would have any control of. The parties involved would have to settle this issue amongst themselves, if there is anything to be settled, but it would have to be resolved amongst themselves.
Jessica, were you seen enough to say something? You're welcome to come back up if you'd like.
Oh, I just wanted to see them.
Oh, okay. So, one last question for you, for me, then I'll, then I'll see if others have questions. Um, so, if you would, come to the mic.
Sure.
So, that, understanding that, and understanding that it might be an issue between the two private parties, you are still the developer, you still intend to move this project forward, and if you do fund, it's your intention to fund these improvements, right? You just don't know the total cost, so...
Uh, there are some, some of these costs will not lie solely within us, so Ian will be responsible for, i- if you read the language of the easement that we've proposed to these parties, um, we're looking for a solution for the next 100 years. We understand that there's infrastructure in the ground that's not in an opportune location or at an opportune age for the development that we're proposing. Um, so, we've crafted language that, um, the current owner was comfortable with, um, and, uh, hoping that those two could resolve it. The guidance we got from Public Works was encourage these property owners to work it out. Um, we have a purchase agreement for the lot, which requires them to work this out. We will be unable to purchase this lot, should they be unable to work it out. So, we're sort of in a pickle. We've got the whole university wrapped up in this, and we've got, you know, finance decision on April 3rd, um, letting us know if our project is funded and ready to move forward. Um, it's, we're just sort of a pickle. Um, but the site plan, you know, that we're here to discuss, um, it does need his line to move, um, or the project is impossible, uh, for us to implement. Um, that's why it's so tricky. We were very firm and direct with the property owner, who we're, um, purchasing the property from, because there's not a lot of gray area. It's a corner lot that's already, uh, you know, not the full size. It had already been divided once in the 1930s. We're dividing it again, so our finished lots are, you know, rather small. This is an exercise in gentle density and infill housing and ADU design. Uh, we, we've all just kind of landed in a tough situation here, so I would encourage you to approve the site plan, so that you don't hold up that part, and then let those private parties work it out.
Yeah, approved today, they still need to work it out before you could even start.
Correct, and like, that'll be the true decider. It, it's, it's going to happen if they can work it out. If they can't, you'll be getting phone calls from me looking for another site, so...
It is unique right there. It's a bit of a dead end, and right by a stormwater solution, we, the city installed, uh, with federal funds, probably 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, I have another light on, Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
I make that comment, that whether we pass this today or don't pass this today, that really doesn't impact the fact that there's two private parties that need to work it out, and they may or may not work it out, and if they don't, then you guys will have to pass. So, I don't think we hold up passing this, because this doesn't actually impact Ian or the current owner.
Correct.
It's just saying that we approved this site plan, um, and so, that, then the, they'll either work it out or not, or not work it out.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to, to clarify that. Us passing this today, actually, we're not giving, we're not giving an opinion to either side, Ian or the current landowner. We're just saying, in the event they work it out, you already have this part done. Okay?
Thank you.
I'll support it for that reason.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Would come up, please? And, did you understand what just took place?
Yes.
And your thoughts?
Uh, I think I still stand with, uh, everything I said. Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure if it would affect anything, so, I, I think that you guys would know better than me, and I, I just, I, at this point, that's, that's everything that I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. There's no further lights? Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks for your testimony, and I just encourage you to stay in contact.
Thank you.
All right.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 23 through 30 were held on March 18th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Moving approval.
There's a motion, a second to approve items 23 through 30. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 31 through 44 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items 31 through
Excuse me. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Inquestion Foundation, and Northern Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish those who are running for office on the first of next month, or next week, good luck, and I know what it's like to lose, 'cause I lost it 23 years old.
All right, thank you. Any other testifiers on these items?
Very store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Most specifically on Saddle Creek Road things, but I'm really against all of them, and I want to say something briefly. Uh, I won't submit the letters that I got back from your attorney, but you, you don't have a copy of the rules out here for people to...
It needs to be to these items.
Please.
If it's not to these items, you...
You don't have a copy of the rules for us to look at before you behold your meeting.
It gotta be to these items.
Okay, enough, but you need to educate your, your taxpayers, okay? Your, this is not, this is not clear or friendly for a taxpayer.
If you're speaking to these items, you can continue.
On Saddle Creek.
Okay.
Uh, that happens to be in my district, I believe. I happened to be looking at one of the, uh, official newspapers of the city and county this morning, and they had, uh, quite nicely out about neighborhood improvement districts, downtown district in this case. So, I'm wondering if the residents up where I live are gonna see this in the paper very soon, about six pages of properties that will be specially assessed for whatever you're going to do, whatever you decide to do, whatever you amend to do on the Saddle Creek thing. That's the way things work here. Once you've, uh, had the first hearing, we can't say anything about things usually. So, you come in an amendment, and I see that you've got an awful lot of money laid out here for special assessments coming up, but you don't tell us how, how many property owners, how far away from Saddle Creek are going... how far away from Saddle Creek are going to be specially assessed. That's a big list for downtown district. Is it going to be that big? If it's that big for Saddle Creek, then you're going to be assessing me and I didn't get to say no to that. I might get a chance yet, so I'm saying no to it. If you go on the website, which most citizens probably don't have time to do, and look at all the attachments, it looks like mostly engineering fees. However, as many years as I've been coming down here and following TIF and things, I would bet that alongside of that, one of these days there'll be an amendment that provides for removing some properties along Saddle Creek Road to do a TIF project. I will be totally against that and I think there's, in Omaha World Hall today, there is a campaign debate about the use of TIF. People disagree about it. Citizens don't believe it.
This is not about TIF.
So please don't come up Saddle Creek and assess me and then turn it into a TIF project and drive me out with higher property taxes because of it. Own up to it to start with, be honest with us upfront. TIF is only used, supposed to be used in severely blighted areas, not for developers. And by the way, the developers are usually also real estate people and there is a conflict of interest in that.
Okay.
That will be coming up in the debates, I'm sure. A conflict of interest...
You may summarize, otherwise you're off topic. Okay. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed and I will just take the opportunity to address number 39 and 40 there, which I think he was referring to, because this is the final step in a long project that's been worked on with the Saddle Creek Business Improvement District, those property owners and the surrounding neighborhoods that will allow for about a $5 million project to be constructed between Northwest Radial and along North Saddle Creek Road, all the way to Metcalf Park and the Peanut, that will make improvements to that neighborhood, business district, improve sidewalks, a bike lane, increase landscaping, decorative lighting, additional parking for the businesses, something we've wanted to accomplish in that neighborhood for a long time. The only people being assessed for this program of work are the business owners themselves in that immediate area because they agreed to participate in the Business Improvement District, which is created through state law and approved through multiple public hearings at the city council level and they have public meetings every week, every month themselves. I'm proud of this work. We've raised over $3 million philanthropically to get this done and about $2 million in city funds, transportation bonds, and ARPA funds to make this a reality. So with this final approval today, we'll be able to break ground in April and we'll engage the companies and the neighborhoods who are very much in support of this program of work on the exact phasing of the construction, April until about October for final completion. So that's the summary of those two projects. I'm very proud of it. I think Public Works and Planning for all of their work along these lines too. There's been a number of items that had to come through city council during these times that all had public hearings as well. We've probably had five different public engagements in the neighborhood themselves to help design what we're talking about here and I'm very confident it'll be an improvement they're looking for. It's already creating new business in the area, Tasty Pizza, Green Line Coffee, multiple other properties with new interests now and a potential development that's not part of this program of work on the vacant car lot that'll bring mixed use and additional living opportunities to the area too. So a win-win for everyone involved. All second? All these items correct?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Non-action items, items 45 through 62 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:54.
Thank you.